Take your name, stand up, and we're happy to have you speak. Yes, sir.
Brexin Morelli, District 4. I lived in Newark for a long time, and I moved away for four years. My job took me away, and it brought me back. It's not the same city that I moved away from when I came back. It moved in a direction that I didn't like, and that's what was the precipice of me coming to council meetings. I didn't come to council meetings to give anybody a hard time. I didn't come to council meetings because there was any particular piece of legislation that I didn't like. It was long before the power plant. I was coming to council meetings when I was one of three people sitting in the chairs. Because I was curious as to why the city wasn't the same. Why it wasn't the way that I liked the city. And you guys get upset about inherent skepticism, but that inherent skepticism came from my watching the function of this city. My skepticism came because I sat here and watched people come in and tell you that they were unhappy, and then you guys unanimously voting to continue making them unhappy. And of course, there's skepticism in that. How can I come to those meetings and watch that happen for two straight years and walk away happy? And not be skeptic of every single thing you do? I have no choice but to feel that way, because I've watched it, and I've watched it with very little exception, happen the entire time. And when I see great things happen, I come up and I tell you that you guys are doing great things. I come up and I thank you guys, and I think you guys are doing the right thing for the people. But when I think you're screwing people, I stand up and I say, hey, I think you're screwing people. And sometimes it stinks to hear that, because you know what? I'm a salesman, and sometimes I sell somebody something, and it turned out that it's not what they need. Not because I sold them what I thought they didn't need, but because the problem turned into something else. And then I have to apologize and fix it. And that never happens up here. When something happens, when you get lied to on a building project and a water tower shows up, no one gets told that it has to be fixed. It just keeps going. And that's where that inherent skepticism comes from. Because I watch failure after failure happen in my eyes. And when people come up and expose those failures, I don't see the fixes. I'm not saying the fixes don't happen. Maybe the fixes happen behind closed doors, and people are made happy, but I don't see it. You know, and as far as the specific problems that I have, when I have a problem and I voice it to my council member, if that problem gets fixed, I come up and say, hey, my problem got fixed. That happened today. You know, they came up and they ripped up my front yard to put in the new ADA compliant curb. Cool, you know, a section of sidewalk that I'm not responsible for for replacing. But they ripped up some of my yard. They kind of put it back, but without any grass seed. I said, so I came and just said, hey, are they going to put grass seed there? If not, I'll go buy some. It's really not the end of the world, but I'd like to know so I don't go buy it, and then they come put it, and I wasted my money. She said, yes, you're supposed to do it. So I waited around. A week and a half later, they put it down. I came back and said, hey, just want to let you know it happened. Thank you. You know, that does happen, but I don't see it happening very often. You know, I don't see the results coming from the council, and I don't see that communication. Let's see, am I touching anything I wanted to? Oh, late meetings. I hate them too. You know why? Because I don't get paid to come to them. And all the work that you put into coming to those late meetings, believe it or not, I put the same work in. I'm on the agenda, clicking on all the links, doing all the research. I know just as much, at least I know just as much about these parking meters as you do, because I have what you guys released. If you know more, it's something that's not being released to me. I've done my research on that, and I had to do it on my time, just like you guys have to do it on your time. And I'm in that meeting sometimes until 2:00 in the morning to talk about the last agenda item, just like you guys are. So, and you know what? And I have to have my thoughts collected and present a good argument from my side of that argument at 2:00 in the morning. Just like you guys have to make a good decision at 2:00 in the morning. But again, you guys chose to do this. You guys chose to run for this office. You chose to be elected, and at least you get compensated for showing. My compensation is to show up, voice my disapproval of something. It probably not get recognized, it probably get voted against, and me to go home defeated at 2:00 in the morning. Thank you.
Thank you, ma'am.
Thank you. Well, I want to thank you all for having this meeting here today. I'm Nancy Boyer.
Ma'am, your name, I'm sorry. I didn't interrupt your name.
Okay, I'm Nancy Boyer. I have a Newark resident. I live just down the street. I want to thank you all for having this meeting, and I think it's also a good opportunity to look deeply into what images we have of ourselves as a community, and especially our governing body in its relationship to the public, our consultant and his relationship to the public. And I had several points I wanted to bring up. One is that government is a different model. There's business that people kind of, they take, put great value in that. To some people, it's just really vibrant and wonderful, and there's nothing you can say better than it was a very business-like meeting. There's a team that we're all heading for the same goal. Hopefully, there's good communication. We work together, but the question is what that goal is. And I hope one, the one goal, huge goal, is good government. And I think that feeling, we don't see many models of feeling really good about having a good democracy, where our leaders respect their constituency. They don't want to shut them out because they're interfering in the way of making progress. They're interfering in the way of feeling good. I wrote a fantastic report. I've been a teacher. I know what it is to write a lesson plan. It's a perfect lesson plan, but unfortunately, there are students in the classroom that don't share my goals. They have their own, their own goals. And so for you all to recognize the goal of a really vibrant community that has this good communication we've been talking about. But look at this room. When I walked in, I couldn't see the screen. The people in the back, I think, have a very poor view of that screen. You all did a great job of rearranging the furniture there. But you could have made this in a big semicircle of all of us, with your chairs there and the screen someplace where everybody could see it. So there's that attitude of walking in and really testing, what does it feel like to be a community member? And then, and what is it? And people on the staff have talked about a lack of respect. That goes to the same thing. It has to be a mutual respect. Mark, very kindly and I think perceptively, said that there is enormous talent and good ideas in the community. And when there's a willingness to listen, the whole community benefits, and you will feel better, because we will applaud you. We will tell you, you're doing a great job. And that feels, as some of you know, really, really good. So just a couple of points are related to that in building that good democracy. I wonder if those packets that go out to the individual council members before each meeting could be made available online?
They are.
They are? Well, I have yet to find those, and so I should look harder. The announcement about this meeting, I didn't know about it until someone from Dover, a PAC from Dover called a friend of mine who said, did you get this message on your voicemail? No, I didn't. So I had no idea about this meeting, except because someone downstate called and said, you know, you might want to think twice about this. And then also, I'm not sure what workshops you say are not well-attended. Maybe it's the planning workshops. But I look at those agendas, and it's really hard for me to figure out what's going to be discussed at those and whether or not it's something that I really need to put as a priority or whether or not I can let it be somebody else's call. So the essential point I want to make is that there is a third model, which is good democracy. And being a great leader in a good democracy has got to be one of the best feelings there is. So thank you.
Thank you. Sir. My name is Martin Nicholson. A couple things I want to touch on. One, Polly, not to, not to correct you, but I have a problem. Chap, just a little pause. I've heard a lot of people talk about leadership, what makes a great leader. And just like adversity, these two gentlemen in the back face it every day. And how they handle that adversity is going to determine how they're going to be leaders. You guys up there are facing adversity every day. And I heard somebody say, you may not like the answer. It's not the popular answer, but it's the answer. Whether it's the law, whether it's the policy, or whatever is the right thing to do, the right thing is the right thing. And you cannot circumvent policy or try to find a way to circumvent the law, take it your own way, if you're being faced with adversity. The way you face adversity is going to determine how you are as a leader. You guys have to face all of us out here in the public. And you hear us every day, every council meeting, every time, about the things that are going on in this city. I've been in this city since I was 12 years old, I'm 47. And you want to talk about some changes? Go away to Boogan in 1984, and come back a year later and like, what just happened in 896? I grew up here, 495 wasn't even completed yet. And you come back and it's done. So there's been a lot of changes that have been happening all over the place, including Newark. And we're talking about culture. Are we going to change the culture of Newark? Or are we going to try to keep some of the culture of Newark? Because as Brett said, we see buildings popping up all over the place. Everything popping up all over the place. How many of you council members, including Polly, who threw out our first pitch, are aware that VFW is up for sale? They want to come and they want to buy the VFW. Well, what's attached to that VFW? How long has that Little League baseball field been there? How long? It's been there for a long time. And they want to buy it, and they want to tear it up, and they want to put more student housing back there. Sorry, I have a problem with that if we're talking about culture for the city of Newark. This is our city. We grew up here. We like to keep at least a little bit of it before it turns into something where no one recognizes it anymore, and they leave. So how you guys handle that as our leaders and face that adversity is going to determine how you guys handle it. Thank you. Thank you. Yes, I'm sorry. I'm trying not to get too late about pointing.
I'm permitted to say my background. I just feel more comfortable facing people. My name's Anne Mary. I came here in 1999. I was, actually, I've been in my neighborhood since 1999. I've been here since the 80s. Graduated at University of Delaware, Baltimore Board of Rights. I chose to stay here because I fell in love with the city. Unique Main Street, all the architecture, wonderful, different types of buildings. I chose to stay here. My husband chose to stay here. He's from Maryland. We decided to raise our family here. I want to thank the staff, and I want there to be a distinction, because, and the police officers, you know, the people that are in the trenches every day. When I talk in my neighborhood, I talk to people in the community, we're not upset with the staff. Unfortunately, the power plant woke up asleep with a giant, the community. And that giant wasn't, don't want to get up. It was poked, and it was angry. So a lot of this is kind of a reaction to feeling like we were, you know, we were, things weren't transparent, you know, what happened here. And so, you know, the transparency of the whole thing, I think, was very shocking. And because the sleeping giant is awake and it's not going away, the sleeping giant is awake, and it's wanting a shift in paradigm. It's asking, and it's telling you, and it's bringing up its voice that the way things have been done can't be done anymore. And the government, City of Newark, City of Newark State, City of Newark Council, the upper echelon, I think the residents are more upset with the upper echelon of City of Newark. That's where we're feeling let down because of the lack of transparency. And so, you know, we really need to come together. We have a different economic base now. We have different skill sets in our community. And therefore, our government, as a form of democracy, by the people, for the people, has to shift its paradigm in order to keep up with what's happened to you out in our community, out in the state of Delaware. And that's what this awake giant now is saying. And I'm sorry if people are uncomfortable that, you know, we're passionate about our city. We're passionate about our life and our neighbors and our families. But we really need to come together and focus on our lack of transparency and how things are done. And maybe it's not appropriate anymore for the city manager to be appointing people other meetings. There has to be city council. Maybe we need a bigger city council. All of this communication comes from a lack of transparency. Just taking a minute to think of, maybe, maybe I should involve more of my team at a different levels. The feeling of inclusiveness, I could go on a lot about that, but, and that's for another time. But this is, we're all talking about good project management. Good project management at different levels. It has to be project management at the top level, project management within staff. And there's a lot of things in terms of technology we can do to help ourselves not be ruled by technology, but to have the benefit of technology. I believe on at least two or three occasions at council meetings, I've asked for text messages to be sent out when these type of meetings were occurring. And, you know, maybe have a bigger format. If you get text messages out to people, it's great. You give us a text message about trash. That's great, because I have to tell my husband, because he takes care of the trash, right? That's great. But there's other things, this is as much of importance to us as getting our message about the trash. So there's also, Mark, I applaud you, about subject matter experts. We're blessed to be in a community with lots of knowledge, lots of great ideas. And I haven't seen in the past city council or city upper echelon in terms of the upper parts of the city of Newark staff reach out to individuals and start bringing those matters in. It's all about being in the in club and who you know. Those text messages will be sent to people and saying, hey, do you have this knowledge? We're interested in this. So bringing the community in so that they feel like they're part of something, part of their community. And then just in terms of inclusiveness, closed captioning software for the meetings. Closed captioning software allows people to speak into a microphone. It projects on the screen, and it's also recorded. And therefore, you don't have the problem having to go back and listen to the meeting notes and having to create your meetings. It should be there for you. So that would be a time saver as well, and it also would speak to the inclusiveness of the public. And then just basic answers or questions, people don't seem to get those very often. And a comprehensive plan, you know, there's, that's our future. And there one thing that stuck out in my mind, as I was reading that in the Economic Development Strategy, which is older now, might be outdated. There's a statement in there that says, and I'm not quoting it, but it basically says, "When people in this community reach a certain age and want to have kids, they want to pick up and leave." One sentence is very powerful, and that leads me to believe, why do people want to leave? Do we know that's a fact? Because I'm still here. Is that why our Main Street has turned into university food court? Is that why we have so much student housing? Because of that viewpoint is sitting in the Comprehensive Development Plan. To me, it sounds like we've lost the focus on our families. We've lost the focus on our families. We've lost the focus on disposable income, which then feeds back into our community and makes our community vibrant. So I really am hoping that we put the brakes on the Comprehensive Development Plan and start coming into initiative ways to bring the public in. The exhibits don't work. We need presentations. We need to have the heads of our departments within the city. I don't know if they wrote those particular sections or just one or two people wrote the entire Comprehensive Development Plan. But there should be an author related to each section of the Comprehensive Development Plan so that the public can contact the author of that section and give answers to their questions, besides other things. But I've already talked to a couple, two or three council members about my ideas. Anne Mary, 302, 545, 3032. I work a lot of overtime. I'm a project manager. I develop databases. So please text me to let me know you've emailed me, because I work so much overtime that I need to know you meet me, and I never get through all my personal emails. Thank you.
I'll let him go first. Well, you can let everybody else to speed, so, yes, sir.
I was going to say, let him go first, but. My name's Tom Oftner. I've been living here since the late 70s, and I have a bunch of cryptic notes that I want to touch on since I was told to hold my comments till the end. But first, I want to say that since I've been paying attention to government in Newark, it seems like there's been a culture of divisiveness. You divide and conquer. Pitted residents against the university. People who want some project against those that don't. I'm not blaming anyone on the council right now. You've inherited this thing. It's been going on for years. I've gotten so frustrated, because for the past 30 years, I've gone to council meetings and watched council listen to people who are very passionate on both sides of any given issue and pretend to care. And then after an hour or so, they vote on it, seven to zero. That's got to stop happening. But Todd several times mentioned polling his district. I would say the best way to poll your district is to listen to the people who are angry or the people who go out of their way to talk to you. They're the ones who have something to say. Luke mentioned pre-meeting meetings, and you shouldn't be having those. Dave Waglum mentioned efficiency. Efficiency is great. I love it, but we shouldn't sacrifice openness and good government in favor of efficiency. Rob Gifford mentioned sharing information. I'm all for that, as long as the information's also shared with the public. Todd and Luke mentioned not being happy with the format that staff gives you information in or not getting the information you want. The thing to do about that is tell them what you want. See, I heard someone say, staff wants what staff wants. The staff should not have an agenda. It's council's job to set policy, and staff does whatever council tells them to. They can advise the council on whether a certain policy would be good or bad, whether it might cost the city more than doing something else instead, but it should not be their job to set policy. Polly mentioned everyone being on the same page. I think the government is an adversarial process. There are checks and balances, separation of power. Not everyone agrees, so not everyone can be on the same page. Eventually, you argue and settle on something to do. If there's too much going on, you need to not have the government be involved in so many things. Postpone some projects. Maybe consider what you're spending our money on. I heard several members of the staff talk about respect and the public questioning everything they do and that we should respect the process. I'm all for that, but on the same token, the process has to be respectable. You have to follow your own rules, run the meetings, cut off people who are out of order right away. Guess that's about all I have to say. It's too early in the morning.
Hi, my name's Tash Rataiga, District 5. I agree a lot with what Anne said. Basically, I listened to you. I thank each one of you here, residents, council, staff. It is Saturday, so this tells us this is a 24-hour, seven-day-a-week, 366-day, 1/8-year job for all of us. The bottom line for me is communication, accountability, and respect. Believe me, I've been to council meetings, and there is disrespect going on all over the place. From where I'm going to ask something, and I sit there. There's a resident that comes up, goes to the mic, they're addressing something, and I too see the staff sitting back here laughing, questioning the residents, and I'm appalled at that. I've sat on many, many boards in many, many different positions. I am also a staff member, and you just do not do that. You are on the clock. You respect whoever is at that mic. Agree or disagree, you respect. And if you don't like it, excuse yourself and leave the room. But don't stand there in front of the residents, making them feel bad, because that's only going to grow more passionate to what that person is going to say. And that's only going to add to a longer council meeting. So please be respectful. The whole thing with accountability. As Anne stated, the whole thing with the power plant woke up a silent giant. I'm the first one to say there's so much more going on than just the power plant. And that right now is getting a lot of focus. Why? Because we believe, we, or at least I will say, I believe as a resident, that proper protocol was not taken with this. Things were done. Council wasn't even aware of it. I understand certain people on staff, while this is their position, they can do this. Moving forward, information has been asked of this other company, which comes back to the example, as council members, you ask staff for information. If the deadline's given and then the deadline passes, I'm sorry. In my job, I'm held accountable for not providing that information. I'm not rewarded for not providing the information. You are all represented, all of us, which brings a point that I believe council member Rob will brought up. You know, I'm glad to hear that your residents in your district speak to you, but if I come and speak to you, sure, you've got a question. Well, Tash, why aren't you going to speak to Luke? Well, Luke may be on vacation. I can't get to Luke. Okay, so the reality is each one of you is representing a small piece of Newark. Your picture is beautiful, as in all of us and yourselves. I'm never going to totally agree with everything that happens in council, but we have to come to a middle ground with this. So again, in closing, it comes down to communication. We spent four hours here talking about communication, and it's only a tip of the iceberg of how much he has to go through this. Respect and accountability. Accountability, that is the number one thing to this, is not held to individuals and to departments. I don't care how much communication you have. I don't care how much communication you have going on. The residents are holding you accountable, and that is why our council meetings are going to 2:00 and 3:00, 4:00 in the morning. We want answers. We want answers. And my apologies, there is one other thing. Each council member should have a...